November twenty first, meeting of the zoning board of appeals, down in Canandaigua. We begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag and then a moment of silence for our.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, or a nation under God, and in this whole liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a note on the Kelly's theory, so. One of our members, Kelly LaVoyes. But those on looking at on Zoom or need to present on Zoom. Will be kept muted until they would like to be recognized and then Mike can go ahead and unmute them. Or questions that they may have. For a public hearings, we will have the applicant present their cases, why they're requesting a variance. After they've presented the reasons why they want to have a variance, we'll have the board can ask them questions. And then after that, if there are people in the audience who would like to make a comment or or question, have a question, they can join in, including the people who are on Zoom. After the applicant is satisfied, and we are satisfied that all the information is made available in the public hearing. We can close the public hearing and then we have sixty two days to make a decision. Hopefully, we'll be able to get to them all tonight, so. Okay. Our first variance request is from living rock castle, marks in hearing. Representing Lydia Evans. Property five two nine O, Kepner Road, Canandaigua. Or let me just, I'll review it here for requesting site plan approval of the new thirty by eighty vision. To existing commercial structure in the form based code zoning. Brances required for parking lot exceeding thirty percent of property with seventy five percent transparency in the structure. And the structure will be seventy nine feet from the front property line when no more than thirty feet square. Structure will be more than twenty feet from the side street. Yes.
Yep, it's John Jones for the marks engineer.
Move that up if you want.
I thought I was gonna break it. Um, just quickly off the record, Kelly, I don't know if you can hear me, but I also just got back from Australia about a week ago, so still going.
Hi, mate.
So I don't know if you can pull up the site plan. Yeah, there. So basically. The proposal. Is a three lot subdivision and site plan. So currently, there's an existing building on the property that is vehicle sales. With the proposal, they're planning on having. Three lots. One, two, three, lot two in the middle will. How's the existing building? And then lots one and three on the both sides will be planned for future development. So with the subdivision component as well, the existing building is gonna have a thirty two by hundred and twenty foot. Addition to the east side of the building. To allow for vehicle services in addition to the sales that they're currently doing. So the variances are associated with that. New addition. And like Mr. Chairman read there, there's five variances that we're looking for. First. So the. First variance for the parking in the front with the with the addition to the east side there, they're planning on expanding the existing parking. Facilities to the east as well. So that's the reason for that, for that variance, which in the uptown code, you're not allowed that parking in the in the front of the building, but. Where the location of the existing building is right now, that would be. Nearly impossible to have any parking in the rear. Just because where is in. Relation to the rear set, rear property line there, and then with the planned. Subdivision, it would be difficult. To. Have any parking in the in the front. Just on a side note. We have gone through preliminary subdivision of the planning board for the three lots that was at the last where the meeting. They granted that. So then the second variance is for the. What is the second variance for?
Building transfers.
Yeah. So let's just kinda. With the this facility being a garage vehicle type facility. There, those windows aren't gonna be. The front facade is not gonna be all glass. Because of the way the existing building is currently built. The windows, when the windows they have on that building on the front side, the whole new hundred and twenty foot.
So sorry.
Length of building would have to be glass. And they're proposing. In the cloud permit we uploaded, you know. Building elevations, I have a couple of picture copies here, but they're proposing. Six overhead doors with the with the new. The new building, so it would be hard to make that possible, make that as well. The other variance. With. In the uptown code, you can't have. You can't have the parking with be more than thirty percent of the lot with. And just based on how this. Existing lot is configured, that would be. Difficult based on where the building is located to have your lot, your parking. Be less than thirty percent of the lot with, I believe, currently, right now, it's more than thirty percent. Lot with. And then the the last two variances are for the front. Setback variance and the side setback rates. As I'm sure you guys are aware, in the uptown district, the setbacks are. It's not a minimum. It's a minimum and a maximum that you have to set the building in between. And our building currently is, I believe. Seventy or eighty feet off of the right away already, so that would. That would be difficult to to maintain the the code requirement there. There was. Talk of orientating the building to the. To the addition, I mean, to the south side there of the new building. But if you, that's unlikely to happen. If you if you scroll down a couple more pages, we can go to the overall development. Or future development concept plan. And the idea here. Was to have cross access to each of the three lots when they get developed, and if that new addition is put to the south. There would be no access to the to the future building on lot one, the one. In in the corner there of three thirty two and Kepner Road. So yeah, that's where we stand today. We. We are here to answer any questions that you guys have.
When was the original building? Current building built?
Uh, I don't know.
Been a while.
It's it has been a while.
Been there. For the current code change.
Yes, yep.
Probably twenty five years ago. It struck me, it just, you're sort of on the edge of the new code and all the properties to your north are all setback. I don't think there's anything north of code. Sort of stuck there, I think. The subdivision was approved?
Preliminary was approved, yeah, we're in the process, correct me if I'm wrong here, Chris, of process, because we got preliminary.
Preliminary subdivision, right?
Preliminary subdivision, yeah.
Not site.
Not site. Uh, if we get the variances here tonight for the. Addition, we'll go back for. Final subdivision and final.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from anybody at home?
I'm good. Yeah, well, I guess I didn't see what the handout was, you know, did you?
It just shows.
Explain it a little better or?
Shows the south exposure of multiple garage doors, basically.
Gotcha. Okay, that was it.
I just have one thing to add, it's okay.
Can you give your name and?
Unlike everything, some of the other property. The the main idea between behind the way we're designing this, the main building that's there now with the addition is what's going to be, what's going to be funding the rest of the buildings on the property. That's our mainstay, that's our business, that's where we make our money from. So with the addition of the base, we'll be able to add in service for vehicles for selling, which will allow us to be able to to fund. The other buildings. We also only other half of that all the way down to Claire Hall, which we intend to develop at some point as well. So this was as close as we could get to trying to stick with the form based code. And still be able to operate our business.
Can you guys speak a little bit to how this does fit in with the form based code and the uptown? Uptown Canandaigua, you know, this is recently adopted, the form based code. And there are variances allowed, but you know, the intent of the form based code is to set a design standard and. You know, I think this, is this the first form based code application that you guys are seeing?
We've had a, we've had a couple.
Oh, we did mention.
Yeah, I think you're right, yep, you're right, yep. But, you know, this is. I guess I'm I'm not picturing it exactly, but is this other than the standard that you don't? Is this fitting into the uptown district? Is it in compliance with form based code? Other than that?
Yeah, so.
Mostly to the design intent, I think.
Yeah, sure. So the first building is the that we're requesting the variances for. Would be the only variances required. With the future development. So just because of where that building is located. We need the variances, the the development for lot one and three is is to the town uptown code. And you can notice how the those buildings are much closer to Kepner Road. I think that is, with uptown code, it was one of the main goals was to kind of bring a. Like a. Like you're walking downtown Canandaigua, that feels so, those buildings are much more closer to the road and meet those. Those setback requirements, it's just the existing building that is is would require the variances.
So the transparency requirement, and so I can see the setbacks are good. The transparency requirement on building one and three, are those gonna be seventy five percent?
It'll be our role, those buildings aren't designed yet, but that's the idea.
You're asking for a transparency variance just on building two.
Just.
For a lot two, okay. Is this, you know, there's screening for parking that I don't, I don't know if I saw it. Is there screening provided for the parking?
There there is plenty of landscape proposed around the. Around the the future development there, but again, I. And then Mike might have a better idea here, but I just want to reiterate the 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 those buildings there are are showing its concept future, that's not. That's not set in stone, like set in stone yet, that's just a an idea of what may possibly.
So you're maintaining that right now with this, you really didn't have too much flexibility because of what currently is there. In the future with the code and all that, we can, you know, be more assured that that we can stick to that. But you, this is something that's been since grandfather, you know, it was there, you have, you have to do the best we can, for sure.
Exactly, yeah.
Excellent. You know, it looks like the the building on the left hand lot there will actually help to mitigate some of the variance. Because I assume it's a lot closer to the curb and it also will be having its parking behind it. Make it make the other one less. Less of a variance, I suppose.
Same with the third building too.
Yep.
So on building two, you've got a picture that shows pavement across the whole lot. But that's not what that site plan chose. The way the rendering turned out.
Yeah, so that white. You see that white area. In between the shaded.
Yeah.
The new parking is existence. Asphalt.
Oh, you're just showing the new parking in gray.
Yes.
Certainly, this is the building that we have right now, this is the addition, this is existing asphalt here, this is the additional asphalt here. And this will be phase three and phase two there.
And you intend to keep the existing asphalt.
Right, so there's just a little bit of additional. Asphalt parking area for the service department.
Can you, and I'm thinking no is the answer, can you pull the pavement a lot two up so those parking. Spaces aren't right up against the edge of the right away? Assuming there's not space, but.
Um, well, that is a just a continuation of of where the existing asphalt is lies today. So that is part of the extension of of the asphalt.
Definitely parking for the service area and not to intrude into the third. Phase, we would have to have it up against the road.
Are there PRC minutes or with county planning board comments? If the board could take a look at. Those show up and. Or do you know if there's were comments from the agency?
To be honest, I'm not quite sure, I don't think there was, there was many, if there were.
I find it totally impossible to find their decisions.
Who, the planning board?
Yeah.
You gotta remember what number it is from the top and then scroll through. Yeah, there's one here for PRC. Had comments or minutes, they met on September eighteenth. I don't see it on program, but I'm looking, it's in the wrong area. Okay, I don't, I don't want to send you on a wild goose chase, I just, since this is the form based code and there's design related issue, I just wanted the. Zoning board to take that into account and maybe have some, see if there were. Comments on whether or not the PRC and staff felt that complied with the with the. Form based code, and maybe Mike, you could speak to that.
Uh, Chris and I both worked on this, the future plans, phase two and phase three are in compliance with form based code. But we did discuss with them, I remember PRC, we discussed the possibility of moving the buildings south extended there. But like the gentleman said, it's gonna interfere with the construction of the other two phases, so. They just, yeah, they're looking for relief from form based code just because of the existing building right now.
This is, this is an interesting one, just because if we go through the five. You know, issues regarding variances and whether or not, I mean, this is a clone, this building is a clone of uptown tire, which is right up the road. It's exactly the same building, is it in the character of the neighborhood? Absolutely. Is it substantial? But now we're talking about a whole new code that you're, you know, which throws all that out the window? Is that what you're you're saying? You mean?
No, I think it's a, that's why it's not a. Statutor, there's not a statutory, you know, if you do this, 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 and this, then you get a permit. Why they have zoning boards is you have to blend those two things together, character of the neighborhoods. Combined with impact on the neighborhoods. In terms of the, you know, what the. Design intent for the uptown improvement district and the form based code and. You know, that you have to come up with whether or not it. Meets those five tests with your. Uh, you know, in your. Very well informed and educated and under the law opinion, and that's what you're paid the big bucks to do is to render that decision. Within the, within the law, obviously, and within, you know, staff and my own guidance and. But if it was, you know. You don't see the easy ones.
No, I understand that, but I'm, this is, this is all the window as far as you have a normal variance would look like as far as what we're trying to accomplish.
You raise a very good point, Dave. And that, you know. I don't, maybe we look at. You know, the the intent of the form based code obviously is to not have what lot two is gonna be. But to have what lot one and three are going to be. Lot two doesn't doesn't seem like there's a lot of options here. And it's already not in compliance with what form based code is. You know, if it was just a blank slate, you would definitely say no. I don't know what's around there. You know, this is, it's unfortunate that what might happen here is, you know, in this corner, brand new, you start out with. Uh, you know, a sheet of pavement right next to your sidewalk on Kepner.
Also, the corner lot, I mean, the whole project is a corner, you know, and so we have trouble with corner lots everywhere else in the town. You know, all of these things apply to each corner or each side, I mean, it really makes it very difficult.
Yeah, the form based code, actually, I mean, it has a lot more. Contemplation of corner lots than does regular code. You know, and they have drawings and pictures and. You know, the eventual lot one will be the corner lot, and yeah, I think that's exactly what.
Hey, hey, Chris.
Yeah.
What what were you looking for specifically? The the PRC, what what was?
PRC meeting minutes or comments?
I actually found like a PRC from nine eighteen twenty three.
Wow, you're pretty good.
Okay.
What did they say?
Well, it, you know, it looks, it's the standard stuff, it says additional notes from the PRC meeting, it has to do with the referrals for. You know, from the farm water district and so on and so forth, but it does say. On number three, form based code application not requiring TB action.
Okay.
If that makes, and it says, last thing is applicant to look at shared driveways off of Kepner, overall storm water mitigation to be considered. And then there's two other points ahead of that, but those are referring to meetings and referrals.
And shared driveways is another thing, the form based code is, it's goal of the form based code.
Right.
You know, I'd be interesting, interested to see what's around there and what is. Possible there before you render a decision in terms of, is this gonna fit in with future development? That will be, you know, that. Has form based code control.
Can you show that again, the site plan? Because I think there, there are shared from the three lots, there's our shared driveways, I believe.
Yep.
And again, the position of that building allows that, I guess, whereas.
Yeah, even. At the planning board meeting, when we got preliminary. Subdivision approval, the driveway there that would be for lot one. That's right above where it says Kepner. They were. Discussing if if we did get the variances and we move forward with the application that they might require us to remove that entrance driveway. At that location, just because of proximity to the intersection of three thirty two. Which would just create. Even more of a shared access throughout the the parcel there.
You're just gonna keep using the existing driveway? No, you're shifting.
Yeah, we're using, and Mike can probably have a better idea, but we're using the existing and then the the new driveway to the right.
Right, yeah, existing is right above the E and road.
But there's, there are sidewalks, not that are not sidewalks.
The sidewalks along the three thirty.
Three thirty.
But not on Kepner. Okay. So you're shifting the driveway eventually? Is that accurate?
For for phase two.
Yeah, but right now it'll come in right in next to the new pavement on lot two, right? Or it does come in right there.
Right where the arrows.
Yeah, right where the mouse is. Yeah, right where the mouse is.
You know, you could consider, if you, you know, looking at the existing overhead photo, there's, you know. A ton of pavement. Up to the right away already. And an entry drive right in the middle. You know, if you could consider, you know, a sub, a condition of appropriate screening. As approved by the planning board or, you know, appropriate skeets screening and. You know, uh, you know. I've seen in districts like this where it's the intent to bring. Um, the. Building or whatever to the road, uh, for pedestrian friendly things, you know. Like a three-foot brick wall decorative, I don't know what exactly from a design standpoint, but I've seen that. Sort of solved the problem of pavement right up the right of way, what he wants to building there.
And with that, you know, I would just ask that you keep in mind the nature of our business too. You know, we are selling vehicles, so by putting up a brick wall.
But I've also seen them require six-foot brick walls. I've also seen towns require six-foot brick walls. Free foot, you can, you can see a car over.
Yeah.
I, and I, and my thought would is that. You could leave that up to the planning board. Who you could. Not negotiate with, but discuss and come to a good conclusion.
So I, I would have a process question because, you know, we have, uh, mentioned the concept a little bit, but, uh. You know, uh, this one to me seemed, I, I'm asking Chris, is, uh, I don't know what's in the pipeline. What more will we see in the future? But I'm sure there'll be more. Should we be looking at this as potentially, um, precedent setting? Or is the nature of the beast, this one being very unique, so, uh, maybe not be that concerned?
Well, you should always be concerned about precedent, except usually no, you shouldn't because things are unique. And if you're gonna grant it. You know, um, lot coverage on Sandy Beach, you generally grant those. Because you're okay with it, which means that the next time someone asks, you're gonna be okay with that one too. Subject to specific facts and conditions and all that.
Well, our life's been about comparability. People will find something comparable and then we get to deal with it and that's where the precedent.
Yeah, but in general. Precedent isn't gonna really bind you up. In this case, I think it could. Because you're gonna have a lot of people coming in. You know, this isn't a, a blank slate. There's. Most likely, and I'm, I'm speaking from a position of ignorance here in terms of the actual. You know, what's actually out there in, in this district, but, you know, I think you're gonna find a lot of parcels where. People are gonna say, yeah, I wanna comply with form-based code. On this parcel where the building set a hundred feet back from the road. But to do that, I gotta have, I gotta have a bunch of variances on what's existing. Do I think that this will be the, this district will ever be the perfect example of form-based code? Probably not. Because you have a lot of existing stuff like what we're looking at right here. The only thing to avoid precedent is to lay out the specific facts. As to why you would think it's, uh, permissible or not to grant the variances. And I, and it cuts both ways, uh, granting or denying the variances require a lot of facts about this specific parcel. Um, and why or why not it would be appropriate? And then the next form-based code variances that you see are gonna have to weigh, uh, the same way.
Again, sure, you've got existing buildings, you've got another building planned. Which could very much get rid of a lot of the problems you have in current one as far as form-based code goes. Building right on three thirty-two, I would assume could have the trans, transparency, it could be appropriate distance, uh. You know, from the fine. I just would see that as. When asked for any variances on that, we would have to stick to what the plan tonight is.
Realistically, when, when are phase two and three gonna happen?
Um, we don't really know right now. Um, depends on how business goes and, um. What the economy does, obviously, you know, we can be successful in what we're doing there. Not too long after.
And you're thinking of those as. Expansion of your business or to sell or lease off as general commercials?
Mine at Kepner Road would probably be, you know, a lease space. Um, the, the third building would either be another lease space or it would be a place for us to expand our operations.
Okay. And you would be okay even if you were expanding your operations, adding the transparency and stuff like that?
That's the goal. That's the goal for those other buildings.
Any other questions from board? Or have any problem closing this? Close the public hearing. Should make a decision tonight and go.
Thank you.
We do have sixty-two days. Okay, next one, um. I will ask Mr. Emery to.
This is Anthony Vinesia, Vinesia Associates, representing David Emery, owner of property at nineteen fifty Michigan Road. Questioning to subdivide ten acres for a future home site of a fifty-nine acre parcel. Variance required is the two resulting lots that have depths greater than two point five times of width.
Yeah, I'm just gonna wait for him to pull up this I play.
I have a question right off the bat. Did Dave bring the crutch for effect or?
All right, so we, indeed, for the record, uh, zoning board member David Emery has recused himself due to a conflict of interest. And will not, and will not participate. Uh, in the deliberations or decision of the board. Uh, but obviously he's an applicant and can't speak as an applicant and/or as a member of the.
The board is, is to disregard any sympathy both that might come from the crutch.
I don't think anybody had any sympathy and then you shift, you're gonna appoint. Yes, Jason, as alternate.
Jason, uh, will now be acting. On this specific. Okay, go ahead. No, no problem. All right, so what we're doing here is, is a two-lot subdivision of the large par parcel that has, um, quite a, a large acreage in Canada. Where there is about twenty-five acres in, uh, Bluefield to the west of us. Um, this one's fully solely, um, focused in Canada. So what we're doing is we're taking a ten-acre parcel off the south side for a future house, house build. Um, the house is gonna be located about the same distance probably from the other house on the road. So, but the reason we're here is because of the width versus the length issue. Um, kind of the note is the parcel in general doesn't fit that anyway, so any kind of subdivision that will be done here. Would require this variance, even if we get a three-acre or under three-acre where that doesn't apply. We would still have to get the variance for the par parcel because of, you know, the diagonal distances over three thousand feet, so. The kind of the goal of where the position of this was, was there's like a higher spot on the south side for visibility for a driveway. The driveway would be about ten to fifteen feet off that south line, just because it's got a little crest there. Um, and then with the pond that's there for the larger parcel, it's kind of just a little. Old farm retention pond area. They wanted to keep that on there, so that's kind of what it was, this, the width and yard kind of driven. Because of the width we needed, and then we kind of passed that pond, got a little bit wider, and then went back and got that ten acres that we needed, so. That's kind of a general, um, synopsis of the project.
There was quite an extensive, uh, ECB board, or. Burnout, uh, conservation board discussion about the parcel.
Yeah.
And I guess what's used would be.
I mean, the use is staying the same. As far as I'm concerned, the only thing is, is there's gonna be a, a new home there.
Okay.
That's, and then that would, that's in the process of being designed now that'll go before planning board as soon as the subdivision's finalized.
So will, will this be creating a flag lot or is that already existing?
It is not a flag lot. It does meet the, the.
Looks like it.
The width, the width, the minimum width is two hundred. It's just because it's so long that you get that two point five times the width times the depth that is the issue.
So it's a subdivision requirement, actually, not a zoning code requirement that says residential lots greater than three acres. Shall not have lot depths greater than two point five times the lot width. And this has a lot width of three hundred and twenty feet and a depth of fifteen hundred feet. Is that accurate?
So the frontage is two hundred? So I think we have the counted of the frontage? I don't know how that's.
No, they counted the lot width as three twenty, which I'm assuming is the.
It still doesn't.
Still.
It's still shy.
Actually, I thank you. Yeah.
It's, it, either way, it's shy, so. So is the, uh, the par parcel as well.
So the, the typical question we ask is, what were the other possible options for you, uh, arrived at this particular shape? Uh, what else was considered and why were they?
The ten acres was kind of what the, the client was pushing for, just a good round number for what they, what they wanted and what they needed. And then the location, there was no real room on the north side to get what we needed, just because there is a septic system on the north side of the house and we can't get through there and. Do we need it? Plus, the visibility for the driveway is greater on the south side. Um, and like I said, that retention pond area. Um, we wanted to keep that in the par parcel. So we kind of get there and we knew that in this general layout, we would need some sort of variance just. Because of the par parcel as well, so. This is what we kind of came up with.
Why does it have to be so long?
To get the ten acres.
Oh, you wanted ten acres, yes.
And the only way you could really avoid it would be shrink it down.
Well, we'd have to straight down and then go around the back of the existing farmhouse and it just really doesn't work for the layout for the parcel to use, so.
How big is the total parcel with Bluefield?
There's twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-five in that. And all the, this parcel, the ten acres is outside of all the kind of environmental aspects that, that, that creek in the back kind of. Has issues with, but anything that's done for development purposes that they do on that ten acres would be far out of any kind of environmentally sensitive areas.
Any questions?
Do we have the, uh, the satellite, uh?
Any questions, Kelly?
No, I'm good.
I would note for the record that the Ontario County Planning Board, uh, returned this as best one with comments, um. The only comment that we haven't addressed here is given the dimensions of the existing lot. Many subdivision options are likely to exceed width to that standard. Uh, which I think is sort of what Anthony just said, you can make it that, but it. Just makes it a weird shaped lot that cuts behind that house.
Then you end up with the parents.
And expose them.
That's right.
Yeah, it keeps it clean.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Comments? Anybody at home? Are you comfortable with you?
Yes.
Can I, can I just make one comment here?
Your name?
Stand up?
Yeah.
Um, part of the reason why this, if you look at that way that is cut out, I mean, if you shrink that yellow down, that is basically a one field. And what I'm trying to do is get around the pond. And that pond also acts as a, all that area to the south of that all drains towards that pond. And then it goes across and, which makes it almost extremely difficult to move a house up close to the road because it's wet. It, not all the time, but I mean, as, particularly when the spring runoffs, it all goes to the pond. And that's part of the reason to get the house back far enough. That's why we did this the way we did. And also, I'd like to be able to get off of Michigan Road and get to the rest of that A lot. Behind it, behind where little Stacy, they, I don't know, they'll probably end up, it will probably all be A anyway, but. Reason why ten acres is there is because ten acres up opens up all kinds of possibilities of what, you know, she grew up on a farm. I don't know that she's gonna have livestock. They have. Chickens and everything now anyway, but I'm, I'm just saying that that's, ten acres makes all that variance compared to having a, a much smaller parcel. And that's why it's done the way it is. And one other thing is that the land all around that that you see is. It's in a partnership of which we have controlling interest, interest, so it's not just ninety acres, it's two hundred and forty-five. That's not just titled in this, I think there's five tax bands there. There's three Bluefields. Two Kennedy.
Comfortable in closing the public hearing? Yeah, but getting comfortable with that? Um, here we have sixty-two days, uh, to make a decision. Okay, next one. Gregory Novak, uh, representing, uh, Novak with the Trust, uh, owner of property at four nine six for Hillcrest Drive, Ken and Diggle.
I'm here remotely. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay. Shall I start?
Yeah, go ahead. Just let us know, uh, why your, uh, requesting this variant.
Okay, um. Um, I live on Hillcrest Drive, uh, which is a, a private drive. And. Um, it intersects with County Road sixteen. And you had the picture up a moment ago. Yeah, um, that's not, that's, that's a great picture, close enough, but, um. Where, if you look at the, um, we'll call it the south side of the picture. Um, where Hillcrest Drive comes down and you see those, a couple of pine trees and the telephone pole. That strip of land, uh, well, actually you can see the black line, uh, running horizontally. Yes, someone has the, uh, mouse. Um, that strip of land, that line is the property line between the property that is associated with Hillcrest Drive. And, um, belongs to the homeowners association and Mr. Smith's property next door. The distance from that arrow, for instance, um, to the north, to the edge of the, right there. Um, I don't know who's helping me, but thank you, um, is, uh, only about, uh. Somewhere between seven and ten feet, depending on, uh, where you move that arrow east and west. And frankly, where the circle's at, it's obviously three feet and goes down to zero. Um, for, uh, roughly twenty-six years or so, um, people have placed, uh, in front of that pine tree. To the west of the telephone pole, uh, for sale real estate signs, uh, right about there. Um, graduating high school signs, um, uh, graduation party, birthday party. Uh, you know, whatever is happening up the hill. Um, because there's, you know, no way with the private drive for anyone to know what's going on up there. Um, it turns out that. A year ago, uh, or so, um, somebody turned in, um. It was actually me and, uh, a reef motor wall for a real estate sign there. In violation of a town ordinance that requires fifteen feet between. A real estate sign and the property line next door. And the rule has to do with, if you live on a private road, you're allowed to put a sign. Near a public road. Where there's intersecting property, but that sign can't, um, be within fifteen feet. Of an adjoining property line, and since there's only ten feet there. You're in violation. So we were told to, uh, take those signs down, and so, um. I didn't do anything for about a year, but I'm getting around to, and I'm submitting and requesting a variance. To the fifteen feet, uh, foot rule, um, for the adjoining property. So that folks who live up in the landings, uh, can put a, a real estate for sale sign. Or for that matter, any sign, and the landings homeowners association is fairly restrictive anyhow, for instance. They don't allow advertising, they don't allow, uh, folks who are mowing grass or snow plowing or any of that sort of thing. To be down there in any case, but it would technically require a variance to that rule for the fifteen. Uh, requirement. Included in the package that was submitted. Mr. Smith, who owns the adjoining property, has written a letter and said, um, he's fine, he doesn't care. Uh, about that, uh, the president of the homeowner association has written. Or has, has signed off and said, the homeowner association is fine, they have their rules. And they're in support because others would like to, um. You know, put signs down there as well, um, and basically for twenty-six years, people have been putting signs down there. But, um, it became an issue last year, so it became an issue for me. So I'm the one doing the, um, variance request, but it will affect all eleven or twelve homeowners, um, uh, up the hill. I think that, I think that covers, uh, everything, I. I can answer questions. Yeah, there are several pictures included. That's, that's not a great one, that, that sign, um, would not really, the real estate sign. Would not be, uh, where, where I would think they would go, and neither would the homeowners. In fact, that one kind of blocks the view looking down West Lake Road for making turns. The, the, the signs would really go to the right of the Hillcrest sign. Yeah, where the arrow is now, even to the right of the telephone pole, there's a street lamp that, uh, is ours. Right about, right about there. Basically to the right, even where the Shay Joseph sign is. Anywhere where, where it doesn't block the view looking down, uh, West Lake Road for driver safety. But anywhere you put it, you know, the landing sign is just to the right of there, anywhere you put it. In that parcel is in violation of the foot, fifteen foot rule. There's another picture that shows the vertical, uh, uh, this shows, right? How much space there actually is, seven point eight feet. And then there's one more that your, your planning team was super helpful and I appreciate it, not that one. Where we actually measured out where we, we would put the sign, not that one. All right, so hard to get it right, um. This one. The center of the road, sign location, right, where we actually, uh, printed it out and measured it out. And you can see kind of in front of the telephone pole, far enough away, you're not blocking the view. And, um, you know, you could actually see it from the road, uh, as you drive by.
Who's sign is, who's sign is the one that's there?
I have a sign there now, the, um, Mac, the, uh. I wanna, I forget their name, who just sold their house had a sign there, uh, just a month ago or so. Oh yeah, that was their sign, the black sign that was there, that was their sign. And they, they sold their house, so that sign's gone now.
So, uh, let, let me see if I heard you right, the HOA has, um, um. Limits on what kind of signs can be put on the general property.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and real estate is not, uh, in the, one of the categories mentioned?
No, real estate, no, they're fine with real estate signs. The, the president of the real estate of, of the, um, HOA. Is one of the parties to the application. So he knows all about this. As is the rest of the homeowners, quite frankly.
Location of your request is actually much farther back from the road than what has been used before.
Uh, it's, it. They, they've been put in different places, um, it's close enough to the road that you can see it. But some of my neighbors are, um, legitimately concerned about being able to look down the, the street. And actually, that thirty-foot distance, it's not so far back, it's right in front of that telephone pole. It's plenty visible, but it's, you know, far enough back behind the bushes. So no one would ever say it was blocking someone's view to, to see, you know, to the right down West Lake Road.
Wait, whose, whose property is this on that we're talking about?
It actually belongs to the homeowners association because the road, Hillcrest Drive belongs to the homeowners association.
Sure, um, and have they, I don't see an application at all in.
From them?
From anybody? Am I missing it?
I don't know if I understand the.
Oh, no, sir, sorry, I was asking, um, Mike or zoning officer, I, I was trying to put you on the spot.
Oh, okay.
But we would. We need the. Actual. Board of Directors from the. We need the HOA to complete an application.
Why are we involved in this? I mean, you know, if you get a listing here, somebody's gonna knock in a sign, and it's, it's gonna be wherever they choose to put it. And if it's on HOA property. It's not a permanent sign.
It would be in violation of town sign code. Is my understanding.
Well, then they could say setback, with a setback, that's what they.
I think Mr. Novak to be helpful and just get it taken care of, submitted his application, but. Grant a variance on the HOA's property under the application of Mr. Novak, unfortunately.
I was prevented from putting a sign up, if I can't do the application, why was I told to take the sign down?
Who prevented you?
The town. Mr. Jensen, I believe.
Can I suggest that we, um. Continue this to the next meeting. Um, you can't take any action tonight, um, and you can try and get this figured out.
Did you know that could be here last?
I did, um, yes, um, okay, I'm, 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 listen, I'm just trying to. Resolve a problem that's been out there for a year, somebody made a complaint to the town. The town called my real estate agent and told them you have to take the sign down, or the town was gonna find them. And I'm trying to fix the problem so I can list my property for sale.
Let's see if we can get you there.
Boy, goodness love you, uh, however we do that works for me, I was told this was the way to get it done.
Yeah, we, we could certainly do it this way, but we may be able to facilitate another way of getting it done.
You have my email, you have my telephone, tell me what I gotta do, and I do gotta tell you, the guys in the planning office. That, um, I asked to help, they've been awesome.
They are the worst, we agree.
No, 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 um, I'd be the first to complain, trust me, they've been, um, they've been. Everyone makes fun of the DMV, they are the antithesis of the DMV.
Thank you, that, that's great to hear and, and luckily we know that.
And he doesn't have to do any more preparation.
Trust me, they, they carried me through this, cuz I was hopeless and useless, so, um, they, they really did. But, yeah, you tell me what I gotta do, I'm just trying to hang up the sign to possibly sell a piece of property. After I've lived there for twenty, twenty-six years, so that's it.
I think what Chris is saying is, just, uh, sit tight, and we'll, uh, we'll, uh, see if we can work this out.
Happiest guy in the world.
Make a motion to continue?
Yes. All right, we will continue it to next month.
Okay, someone will tell me if I gotta show up again or something? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And next one is Michael Flavel, um, representing Notre Dame, uh, Retreat House. Uh, five one five one Foster Road. Owner of property is five one five, five one, Foster Road, applicant proposes replacement of existing. One, uh, size of ground sign with a five foot ten inch tall and ten foot wide. Uh, three, thirty-five point eight three square foot sign that requires a height variance of one foot ten inches. Uh, four foot is allowed, square foot, uh, variance of twenty-seven point eight three square feet. Eight square feet is allowed, and this has thirty-five point eight three. Applicant also proposes another replacement sign, is five feet high, forty-six feet wide. And, uh, six point six seven square feet, uh, requires a height variance of one foot. Now, these are already done, correct? Is there someone here to present this to the board?
Can I make another motion to continue?
Yeah.
I second it.
All in favor? My comment is really there, but we still need to have a presentation.
Yeah, but, so Mike, can you reach out and tell them they need to be here at the next one? Or a representative, as she did.
They were coming down the road, anyway, okay. Moving on, this is Rocco Venesia. For. Property owner at five two nine zero zero Foster Road. Uh, requesting subdivision of thirteen point seven nine acres into five lots, lots four and five having access to Foster. On a private drive, lot one requires a variance as its depth is greater than two point five times the width. Sounds familiar.
So, so, um, the project is on Foster Road, it's the old German Brothers barn, that's right there, there has been some action around there, the barn has been. Taken down from the original two lot, three lot subdivision that we were granted about a year ago, one of the, um. Caveats was to take the barn down because the barn was an old ag barn, it was within. Purview of being able to keep it to do any kind of development whatsoever, so that has since come down, so we're moving on to the next phase, which is the. The final kind of subdivision layout of the, the property. So there will be two more lots, they'll be subdivided off the road, frontage and access off Foster, and then. The three lots in the back will be accessed off of a private drive, there'll be a private driveway agreement right away, all that for maintenance issues and. Things of that nature, plowing, ceiling, paving, whatever, um, comes up over the years of where a tear in the road. Um, the reason we're here is because a lot one has a, the width and depth issue similar to the one we just, uh, discussed. Um, this one's a little bit closer to what we need to be. If you look at different areas on that, the, the widest it is at that kind of that one point in the middle is about three hundred and sixty feet. So, uh, we're about eleven hundred feet deep roughly. So that puts us about, you know, two hundred feet shy of, or two hundred feet over of what we're, what's necessary. So, um, there was kind of the same, some of the same issues as the parent parcel itself is. The same kind of, it's, even the frontage is too, too narrow for the depth, so anything that we did there. Would require some sort of variance. And all the houses in this subdivision will be serviced by. The, uh, public utilities, sewer, water, gas, electric, everything's there.
And the original lot is kind of narrower, um, the.
The, the, the original lot that was purchased before the, the first subdivision, we took the two, two flanking lots off.
Okay.
It was a, it is a narrow, long lot because of, you know, the frontage and then it went back to the center of the gully. So, just in, just kind of just the overall, it used to be more squared off of the roads, you could kind of see where those two lots were taken off.
Right, but where, but what was left is kind of that key sheet anyway.
Yeah, same thing, so we're kind of. Tucked in there to the gully, to the gully to the north and then also the gully to the east.
Gully and other topography determines where you.
Correct, yep, the, the houses will be, you know, this side of that LDO district, the steep slope district.
And that's the barn that's gone?
That's the barn that has been removed, correct?
No other way you could achieve it without.
Not, not really, the, couldn't, we tried to look at it different ways, but the three lots, we could have possibly tried to do four lots and. But with, and then we would have to get a variance for the, the private right of way having more than, um. Three lots, we're only allowed three for a private right of way now, so that would create the fourth, and we figured that the, the three lots is. A little bit better as far as development. Then try to sh- shuffle another fourth in there and, and not have a, we'd have a different type of variance anyway, so. We figured that the width versus the length would be a little bit easier for the down.
Questions from the board? Anyone in the audience, yes?
So, if I understand correctly, the only two homes that will face Foster Road, there will only be two?
Well, there's, there will be four, there's two lot, there's two that have already been sold, there's, this is two more. So the original subdivision a year ago was those two that you see. That has already been approved, and we've sold those lots off, they're waiting some of their type line approval, so it will add. You know, this portion is just the two, but there's already been an approved subdivision for the, the, the flanking, the easternly and westernly lots.
So four facing Foster and three interior?
Correct. Originally, we had eleven. We did, but the, um, some of the laws over the couple of years that we, we've been kind of looking at this property have. Been adjusted for private right of ways, and also it's. been adjusted for private right of ways and also it's, it's really hard to get a town road in there with a cul-de-sac turnaround for fire apparatuses. We can do it the way we have it now, but as far as like a town road, you would just absolutely just destroy the whole site. The goal of this was to pick three really nice building sites that we can just kind of cherry pick where we wanna put the houses and only
And preserve the property, cuz it's really pretty back there, so trying to keep this as nice as we can.
Ever brought around that road, at least two neighbors. So how does this get away from that?
Well, this is, it's, um, the zoning requirements for the R-one-thirty are, that's where we're, I think R-one-twenty or R-one-thirty. We're within the zoning requirements for lot size in that district. It's just, one of the reasons that most of the lots are, and if you look at the lots, every single lot on the north side of Foster Road doesn't abide by that length versus width, they're, they're, they do because they're not over. If they're under three acres, they do, but you get that long, narrow ones and it was basically just someone had that property at center of the gully, center of the gully, with the minimum frontage and just kind of carried it through. So it's, it's similar in that aspect, but we're actually quite a bit wider than most of the lots there with the, with that lot one.
May I ask, what is the size of four lots facing Foster Road?
They're, they're a little over thirty thousand square feet, so just under an acre. Just under an acre, forty-three, forty-two thousand acres.
Are you comfortable with, uh, presentation?
Yes.
Board comfortable with closing? Next one is Logan Rockcastle, Mark Engineering, um, or property at County Road, uh, sixteen four, four oh eight oh, uh, requesting a site plan approval, tear it down and rebuild with a single family residence. Various requests for twenty-four point two, twenty-four front setbacks for retaining wall and fifty feet foot setback is required. Yes.
Oh yeah, John Jones, uh, works engineering. Um, so the proposal here is, um, the owner is, uh, going to be, uh, completely removing, uh, the existing residence and replacing it with a new house. With the new house, it will be meeting, uh, all the, uh, front side setback requirements. The variance that we're, uh, going for tonight is, uh, front setback for the, uh, retaining wall or the driveway. With the new, uh, home design, the applicant is planning on having a drive-in, uh, garage in the basement. And because of the topography there, uh, across the, the, uh, front of the site there, um, the, the, the retaining wall is required to, to hold that area back. Um, those are, uh, showing two-foot contours, so it's about, uh, fifteen, fifteen to twenty percent uh, slope in the front, front yard there, so, um. But, other than that, the, the new house, uh, is, um, in more compliance than what the existing home would be, if you go back to the existing, uh, site plan, you'll notice it's nearly on the neighbor's property line, uh, so we're moving it back to meet the eight-foot side setback there. Um, and every other setback for the house, um, we're just here for the, for the variance for the driveway. From, uh, from, uh, setback, so.
And the retaining wall is gonna be at where you leave the house?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be accurate at the top, um, it's gonna be a drive-in, uh, garage and then second floor of the house is gonna be, uh, overhanging deck, uh, over the, um, over that area there.
Where, where is the garage?
The garage would be, uh, under, the, the, on the basement floor, so drive in.
Right now, it's a considerable bank fear, which is not really, doesn't even retain you, really.
Yeah, no, it, we're really, um, improving the, the front of the site there with the, with this new, uh, proposal. Um, we did receive, um, and they, or we, I talked from it, the neighbor's letter uh, to the south, uh, with concerns about the setback and the drainage on that side. He was wondering if there, if we could do a swell there, uh, and we are proposing a swell on the south side to help with the drainage. And then he was wondering about the setback, um, with the new house and we're, we're meeting the the code requirement and movement back further than what it is existing today, so, um.
Looks like it was moved back after his letter. And he, I can't remember, his letter, quoted us a smaller area, five feet, that makes it the in the property lines of the house, but it's really eight feet.
Eight feet, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I believe he, um, I'm not sure if the person was in the audience tonight, but, uh, yeah, I believe he, he, he got the zoning code messed up, he thought the requirement was ten, ten feet when it's only eight, so.
So, you know, off the top, you are improving the, the non-conformity issue. But, uh, for anybody that has to face change that lives in the neighborhood, the drainage is, uh, is obviously, uh, the big topic. Can you explain more about the, the drainage, uh, uh, plans?
Yeah, so we are installing, uh, if you can see on the site plan, those two magenta circles, uh, those are new dry wells to, for the, uh, roof runoff to, to go into. Um, and then on the south side, we have a swell to catch any of the, any of the dish, uh, stormwater coming off of the neighbor's property to the south and direct it to the, to the new dry well there in the lower right-hand corner of the site.
That would be under the planning board's purview really, make sure that's all.
Yeah, and just for the board's, um, knowledge, we did receive, uh, MRV, letter today with the comments on our site plan, and they're all, they're manageable, no, no big issues there.
And will your, uh, site plan resolve this water issue for your neigh, for the neighbor?
Yes, uh, so, yeah, you might have been, been another, Chris, when I mentioned, um, the neighbor was talking about, uh, a swell on the south side there and we're proposing a swell on the south side as well as a dry well um, to help, uh, alleviate some of those, some of these issues.
Swell would be between the house and the property zone?
Yeah. It goes into the, the, uh, the dry well, that, that magenta. Yeah, like I said, the topography across the front there really drops off. But, I, I, right now, she's, if you go to the existing plan, she's, she's parking, um, she's just parking in the driveway there and then walking up all those steps to get to, to get to her house. So this, she, her new plan was to, or the proposal was to have the drive-in basement. Um, so she doesn't have to do that anymore, uh, but then because of the grave, we need that, um, retaining wall in front.
Were permeable favors, uh, considered in the design?
No, they were, well, we, but we can run that by the applicant, um, and see if she'd be willing to.
Right.
It is right next to the lake though, so it'd be good to consider for sure.
Any questions from the audience?
Yeah, I am, thanks guys.
Okay, um, next one, last one. Uh, Kara Myers, uh, four-two-seven-eight, County Road sixteen. Applicants proposing to construct thousand forty square foot, twenty-three foot, eight inch tall accessory building on a hundred and seventy-one thousand square foot lot. One foot eight inches for the, uh, height of the accessory building, where twenty-two feet is permitted. Your request?
Work together on the airport. Um, yeah, so just to give you a little bit of a background, I don't know if you're familiar with my property. Um, it's, um, back up off the road. The barn location would be about, uh, four hundred fifty feet back. Um, it's a nineteen forties, um, log cabin. And behind it is kind of all field and, and some woods. Um, it's not visible from the road or neighboring properties. Um, but we understood good design is important and we kind of wanted to create a barn that had somewhat of a a historic nature to it, so proportions, um, and functionality were really important to us. Um, we did redesign after speaking with, um, our folks in the zoning and development office to try and get it closer, um, to the town requirements. But that one foot eight inch, we couldn't quite get beyond when we were looking at the functionality and proportions. It's a, it's a storage barn, uh, right now, you know, we've got stuff in the field or off-site and so it's really important to us. We've had this for about forty years, it'd be really nice to have an accessory building on the property to be able put our personal possessions in. Um, the other thing is, um, even though you, you can't see it from the public right of way, we do have letters from all of our neighbors, you know, we discussed it with them and, um, they, there were no negative remarks, really only positive remarks.
I think, yeah, all the letters were positive, um, you know, the site plan just drove up there today, which is interesting.
Oh, you did? In the rain, oh goodness.
You know?
No. You might have had to do a Zoom meeting from up there if you could get back.
So the barn is going to be, you know, most directly west of but it's not going in that cleared field.
It, it is actually in the cleared field of, um, if you look over, um, at the bird's eye view, where that, that's our boat that was there, it's basically going to be in that area. Maybe a little bit that and behind it, so it's in a cleared area.
Certainly not very visible when the leaves down.
Yeah, well, and we also own the parcel to the north and to the, I guess northeast there as well, so we're our own neighbors, if you're looking at the, the properties next door.
Property you have access? Except through your place?
Yes, but, um, this property that we're talking about, yeah, there's, there's a right of way.
So, uh, we've been, um, pretty, uh, strict on the height. But you've, you have said that it wouldn't be visible, uh, from most vantage points, is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I guess the only thing I can say about that is, you know, we tried to redesign it, we did redesign it once to get it down further and to have the, the ceiling height and to not make it the squat structure, we really wanted to have it look more like a traditional barn, a little bit more of that vertical nature. And, and there's actually a historic barn in the corner of Foster and it won't be as beautiful as that. But, you know, that's kind of the feeling we were hoping to get and.
Do you wanna show what the board through the pictures that you submitted? Mike, if you can put those up?
This, well, that's the historic barn. Just trying to show that there is this kind of a similar, um, barn in the area. This is looking back at the area where the barn would be to the west, so that's the field. That is the view from the road when the leaves are there. And that's where the chair drove up the winding road. And this is just a, a perspective from, uh, our other neighbor that's right below us. Um, you know, it's, I hesitated to do these images because they're, all they're showing is trees, but I think that's part of what's important is that, and there's a very, you know, steep slope that goes up to the top of the hill, so it's just all trees. The neighbors, uh, cannot see, um, the area, but I thought it was important to make sure that they knew, you know, that we were building this barn and to hear their thoughts. Is that what you were looking for, Chris?
Absolutely.
Questions from the board? Satisfied with information you given?
As long as no one has any question.
Ask about, who in the audience, only eleven? Questions from the audience?
Wait, one other question, I think, why can't you reduce it forty-one square feet? What's the reason for a thousand forty?
And I knew I was gonna forget, but because you're welcome, the, with the, the height of the roof line, it was gonna, what's it called? Choice, that the pitch would change so that it was more squat to be able to keep the headroom. And, and I should have written down what it is called, actually, the beams that.
Oh no, this is not a historic preservation.
They tried to redesign it, it's just a.
We had to have it ten foot, or nine foot or ten foot.
It's, it's ten foot because we have to be able to store, and then we have storage space up above that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that's it.
Can I suggest that we save the first one, the last?
First one, the last.
The, one of the new, uh, new form code, form base code?
Yeah, probably say it's gonna be more discussion then.
Is the last two just?
So let's start in at, uh, the Hillcrest Drive one.
That one you've already continued.
You continue.
Uh, let's see, so we're going to fifty-one, fifty-one Foster Road, the sign, we have to go on also. But we're gonna loosen up, uh, lighten up our load next month. Okay, fifty-two-hundred, uh, Foster Road. The only issue here is we can't width versus depth.
I'm a big fan.
Let him vote on this one.
The neighbors asked questions, but I didn't understand them to be opposed. They didn't say that, I don't think.
Well, I think the questions they were asking really aren't affected by the variance at all, variance request at all.
The questions were about the lots that would not need the variance, I think.
Okay. So we call the question, okay?
So this is the current one.
The, actually, Mr. Chairman, maybe if I could recommend that you talk about your reasons first.
Okay.
Um, and then that sort of makes putting the findings together a lot easier.
This was a question I was gonna bring up sort of as an issue. We could do it now, I suppose. Just in the past, we've put reasons down. There have been times in which I've added reasons, which I thought were brought up in the discussion. But in a few moments, while we're kind of trying to come up with things to put down, we don't always remember to do them. But the question was whether that really is legal to do it that way.
It's unclear? Yeah, it is legal. Is it the best practice? No.
No.
Um, you know, the best practice is right now before you go have somebody read the five area variance test and you all have the discussion based on that. And then the findings back are created organically. It's a little bit more cumbersome, but I think it actually facilitates the discussion just as well. And you're not going to spend a ton of time, you're all going to agree for the most, on most of each of those five. Or not, and say that.
So the question would be whether the benefit can be achieved by any other means feasible. Present that that's really sort of what they're working with. Undesirable change in neighborhood or character, detriment to nearby properties. Whether the request is substantial. In this case, it's really not that substantial, I think. Probably around three times. My half times. Whether it will have adverse physical or environmental effects. Whether it's self-created, it is self-created, but I don't, I'll work with what they have as they could. I think certainly part of it is determined by the topography shape of the property. And then there's words like down in there. Stream lines.
It's just lot one or is it lot two as well needs to be?
Just one.
Just one.
Just one.
Just one, okay.
Yeah.
Got a question?
It's a oddly shaped lot to begin with as well.
What other option would they have is, is I guess my question.
It's an oddly shaped lot and it's already in violation of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Getting four out of the five to fit in the regulations, not?
Yeah. Yeah.
This is five two zero Foster Road. CPN dash two three dash zero one eight six subdivision lot requiring a variance for depth that is two and a half times greater than here. Shall the variance be granted? Shannon Chevigny.
Yes.
Bob Hillier?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Saler.
And then so your first reason would be for the reasons stated during the board's deliberations. Then you could say that, you know, the standard, the normal ones.
Conditions as, as presented on the also, now does this have to be done with a year?
Yes, I would recommend that as a condition.
Does that mean?
The subdivision has to be done with it.
The houses don't have to be built.
Oh, we're doing it, yeah.
We did the file.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. The subdivision has to be completed within a year file.
There is, there were no plans for that, for the, what they were building, so.
Okay, very good. That's that one. Let's go then to four two seven eight County Road sixteen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Height of the accessory building?
This is not the height of the accessory. Oh, this is the one you want to dump to?
I was going down to the next one. Oh, sorry, that's good point. Okay, let's go to forty eighty County Road sixteen.
I remember in our discussion, you know, from the presentation, they mentioned they were improving the non-conformity that existed.
Right.
And then we talked about the drainage and you said that correctly, that the planning board would have to, you know, huncher that.
And we go through the five questions, benefit achieved by other means, I think.
Shall I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, it, it's probably not pertinent to this, but when you're doing, because basically there's gonna be a wall and the driveway is gonna come up and then they're gonna go into the driveway. This is holding back the, the stuff going. Is there, and, and so the wall is gonna stop at ground level. Is there any rule about needing to have some kind of a fence or barrier so you don't drive off over the edge? Okay.
What, what was the answer there?
He said no. Thank you. Sorry.
So I think.
You're on number one.
Yeah, the benefit achieved by other means, I think. They want to have a barrage.
They need the ground to be there.
Undesirable change in the neighborhood. This will actually be improvement from the current. Right now, there's sort of a little little retaining wall and then it's just sort of a bare bank going up, which is the house is gonna come off at some point. Requested sandal.
Because of the, I mean, you're not talking about a structure.
No, you're talking about a wall.
It's just a wall adjacent to and really kind of part of the driveway.
And they, didn't they say that they are have moved away from the, the, the line with the neighborhood?
So the new house will be?
Yeah, right.
Adverse physical or environmental effects. Will actually improve the drainage of the property. Self-created, but again, it's, it's lessening the degree of non-conformity on the old house, so I think there's a.
Also about the size of the lot, zero point two one nine acres, which doesn't give a lot of options.
Right.
For alternative methods.
But they were able to do it without needing a coverage or building.
I think some of the neighbors concerned, I'm guessing, is what they're promising is okay, will they deliver in terms of, you know, okay, we're gonna have a swell, we're gonna, will it work? And you don't know until you do, or, you know, the professionals will say a little bit. But that's probably natural for a neighbor to say, well, it's going to be changed. And you say it's gonna be better, but I, I've got my fingers crossed.
It's, that's what the planning board's for, honestly.
Well, but the, and the applicant seemed like, though, they were listening to the neighbors, which is kind of a first step, right? I mean, they were addressing the concerns, so.
That's a good point, right. And the overall drainage will should be an improvement from what it is now. Ready to call a question?
CPN dash two three dash zero nine four. A variance requested for a twenty-four point two foot front setback for retaining wall, one fifty foot setback is required. Shall the twenty-five point eight foot variance be granted? Shannon Chevigny?
Yes.
Bob Hillier?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Saler?
Yeah. If the reasons given go to the plans that were presented, then it will be done, can be done within one year. Now, we'll go to four two seven eight County Road sixteen. Various required for one foot eight inch height variance. Twenty-two is permitted. Questions on this? Will we go back?
And you thought they're covered.
Seems like, seems like that's cumbersome at times, but anyway, I guess it's good to be complete and systematic.
Well, once you get in the habit of it, it's not cumbersome.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means, I think the applicant indicated the height is necessary for preservation of the appearance of the building. And also they need access of ten foot access. Door.
And the other alternative, shrinking it by forty-one feet. Wood. Which is the pitch.
Yeah. Undesirable change in neighborhood, detriment to nearby properties. It's not gonna be visible from other properties. We have letters from or at least four neighbors approving the project. Whether it's substantial, it's really only a foot, eight inches out of twenty-two feet, so it's not substantial.
It's a four acre site.
I mean.
It's a four acre site in the middle of the woods.
Yeah. And not easily accessible.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna quote Dave and, and John Casey must say it too, that, you know, if nobody can see it and you own this big piece of land and they have the adjoining place, you know, with, you know, why is that a, you know, a problem? Having it and, you know, it, it, it seems to me that, that, you know, what they're asking for is, is justified.
If they were looking for twenty-five feet, you might second guess it, but this is only a foot, you know.
The answer to that question, Bob, is, the answer to the question if a barn is built in the woods, does anybody notice? Is no, probably not. Kara probably could have just built this and nobody would have noticed, but who's the judge?
Yeah.
It's Kara say, nobody can see it. And what if, you know, she just isn't looking to the west or, you know, it gives a, a layer of review.
Yeah, you're right.
And it's, you know, uniform enforcement of laws, but I think you're right. It's just, if you don't apply it to everybody and make everybody go through the process, then you're gonna have all of their saying, oh, yeah, no, don't worry, this isn't gonna bother anybody when it might be on top of.
And that's true. And that's in two thousand twenty-three, she's creating no harm. But this is forever, no matter who owns the property. So we have to be.
No, I'm not, I'm not. I'm just saying that we've done this before. We went on MacIntyre, but the house was built there trying to, you know, to do the same style for a barn. And in this case, they run a gamble style barn that fits in with all the neighborhood barns. So I don't think it's out of, you know.
Oh, it fits into the character.
It's, and again, if they wanted it needed to be a whole, like a lot higher, you could say, well, no, that's, that's a little round, but I think it all fits.
Whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, effects, I don't think, no. Self, it is self-created. Anything else, anybody? Call a question? We gotta go on our first.
Okay. Applicant is proposing to construct a thousand forty square foot, twenty-three foot, eight inch tall accessory building out of one hundred and seventy-one thousand six hundred and twenty-six square foot lot. Variants required for one foot eight inches for height of the accessory structure where twenty-two foot is permitted. Shall the variance of one foot eight inches for height be granted? Shannon Chevigny?
Yes.
Bob Hillier?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Saler?
Based on the information presented tonight. Yeah, thank you. There was a slide.
So no, we're bad. He said, oh, it's a.
We're at the end of the agenda, let's head out.
No, no.
We've got some very important things to discuss here. I won't be.
I think that would've been weak on it.
Yeah. Adjourn.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you.
You say nothing if you stay there?
Can I? Or you want me to get up and move? I'll do whatever you want.
I would say get up and move if you didn't have a bubble lag.
Yeah. Denied.
Trap shot.
I will not say you.
Hey, we have not said no tonight. I have, you know, I, I can't go approve and everything.
She's got a little locked and loaded for you.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we go through those five tests and actually list out factual reasons on this application to avoid any appearance of impropriety. It's why I asked Dave a couple of questions at the beginning, you know, just so that this wasn't a rubber stamp. I think this is a, generally the kind of application that this board doesn't have a ton of questions about because it's pretty obvious. But I think that it's important since it's a member of the board that we go through the process and have the actual findings.
I think we should attach a requirement that he has to put an in-ground pool and just, you know.
For member use?
For our use always.
Yes.
Okay, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the aperture.
No.
No.
Um, the Ontario County Planning Board even pointed out that or nineteen fifty? That just about any other subdivision configuration would be.
That just needs the same variance.
Yeah.
Undesirable change in neighborhood, character, detriment to nearby properties.
Definitely that.
Applicant owns nearby properties, so it would not likely be doing that. Whether the request is substantial.
What does it work out to be?
Hey, we, we might want to hurry up. My lights are flickering, just to let you know.
Three twenty out of fifteen hundred? Really barely three times the width, right?
No, five.
Yeah.
I think that's what they pointed out during the presentation, right?
Yep. Five times the width?
Yeah, almost three times.
On a ninety-seven acre parcel, or out of a ninety-seven acre parcel.
I don't know if you'd call that substantial or not. Quite sure I totally understand the reason.
What does substantial mean?
Yes, that's, beauty is in the eye of the beholder and it's up to you in, in relation to the this particular situation. You've got an enormous parcel. You're creating another large parcel. I mean, if you're creating a half acre parcel, that's three times, that's five times the width, then you've got a, you know, then it might be substantial.
That's why I would say it's not substantial, right?
Yeah, I think that's legitimate.
Makes sense.
Shannon, Jason, do you agree with that?
I, I do. I also think it's not substantial because you're starting with the shape that is almost in violation anyways. So if by nature, you're going to end up with shapes that don't fit. Well, yeah, and you would have had to pick up the whole pond in the new parcel. I mean, that's just silly.
Whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, no, not. Whether it's self-created, yes, but it cannot determine.
And if, you know, there's site restrictions upon, there's a subject thing on. And, you know, there's site restrictions upon, there's a subject thing on the north side.
All right.
Topography. Topography of the site, the agricultural use of the site.
Sightlines for the driveway.
Yep. Yep.
Saint Yan dash two three dash zero eight zero. Uh, requesting to subdivide ten acres for a future home site from a fifty-nine acre parcel. Variance required as the two resulting lots will have depths greater than two and a half times width. Shall the variance be granted? Shannon Chevieux.
Technically, this is two variances then?
Um, no. One.
You have one for the.
Just for the new.
Just for the new one.
Right.
Okay, right, yes.
Bob Hillier?
Yes.
Kelly La Boy?
Yes.
Chip Salin?
Yes.
Jason Outls?
Yes.
Can we just?
Because.
The parent parcel will not have a lot great, a width greater than the.
Yes, it will, but it already does.
Parent parcel?
Yep.
Oh, gotcha, but it already does, okay, so it's one.
That's where I wasn't sure, yeah.
But so their sentence is still correct, it's just not.
Okay, as, as depicted on the plans presented today tonight, um, something that needs to be done within a month, that was. You're.
I'm good with the month.
Tomorrow morning. Within a year and.
You waited on me, she was looking forward.
Or you can talk to me.
Well, we'll do Kepner Road.
Mm-hmm.
And Hillcrest Drive next time, and also the Notre Dame.
Our goal is to not have Hillcrest.
Yeah, Hillcrest, well, we can move that.
We, there have been signs up there, I mean, I've lived down there for some twenty years, there's been signs, always been a sign, there are one sign or another, they go up, they come down.
I just emailed the development staff, Mike Warner included, and Sarah, um, so we can talk about it tomorrow and figure out.
So, I mean.
We, we didn't turn Kepner Road, we, we're gonna discuss.
We're gonna discuss that now.
No, we were just talking about the Hillcrest Drive sign.
Okay, no, I understand, I just.
I find it strange that you'd need a variance for a temporary sign that everybody and their brothers had on in front of their house, you know?
He said somebody complained to the town, and that's what made the whole thing, the ball started rolling.
Well, I, I can see the way they've placed some of the signs, it does obstruct some of the view to the south, and the ones.
They obstruct your view, yeah.
The ones that they just.
They came out real easy.
Just move it. Right, Dave, just move it.
Stop a moving vehicle.
Um. All right, let's see, any requests for rehearing?
We need to.
No, you gotta go back.
You guys will bag it.
Sorry?
Kepner, the form-based code.
Back to Kepner.
Shannon was suggesting that we save it till the end, so.
I, I just assumed that was gonna have the most discussion out of everything tonight, so we may as well leave those till.
I'm sorry.
He forgot.
I personally don't have a problem with this, uh.
Well, this one's a little weird. I can, just my opinions here, no, I, no, I don't even think I have a question buried in all of it, but the form-based code variances we've seen so far have all been new builds. It's okay, we're, we're gonna follow the new form-based code and, um, like it was that one apartment, they're gonna do the wonky thing with the angle, so they aren't, they, they drift away from the min, uh, maximum. So it's like, okay, it's something that is starting from scratch, but you do kind of face this, right, when you completely change the code for an area, nothing that exists there is conforms to it, and it's not going to, but then they go to touch it, and it's, well, then it's the question of okay, you're pre-existing and so you'd be grandfathered in and not have to follow it, but now you're touching it, is this the opportunity where you can kind of force something to follow what the, the intended design is and everything else? And if you look at it from that perspective, I don't think this fits what the intention of the form-based code is.
Well, you're, you're still saying we use the same criteria.
It is. Sort, well, okay.
Yeah.
Or not, I mean.
Oh, yeah, I, I think you do, but.
So, it's, it's just that we're dealing with a code that we're unfamiliar with, or.
Well, to me, it changes the, to me, it changes the substantial-ness, that's can be a word today. Um, because if, is this substantial a change, given everything else that's out there? No, it's not, this is fine, it looks like everything else is out there. Is this substantial compared to what the purpose of the new form-based code is? Yeah, this isn't what it's supposed to look like, this is supposedly not what our town wants stuff here to look like anymore.
And so we don't really have much of a track record.
We don't.
And we always relate to that with, uh, with what we've formerly done, we don't.
Yeah, we're, we're literally trying to approve a request for a variance on something that isn't even what it's supposed to be to begin with.
Right, exactly.
I mean.
However, they're also encompassing the other two lots on each side to meet.
But then.
They're working with the form-based on the other side, they're encompassing it into it.
They're not, though, this is really about this one development, I mean, he's, he's shown us the grand vision is that these other two things are gonna happen, but there's nothing at all that says he even has to subdivide.
But he's got a building already, it's sitting back.
That's it?
I guess, I mean, the building is where it is.
The building's where it is, the, the little bitty building, I mean.
It's not much of a building.
Right.
Chris just added a point, he said, that's condition we could make.
If you, if you look at this picture, this little bitty part is what's existing, this is all new.
Yeah.
So what you have, in my mind, the way I kind of see it, is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conformity. Um, told you in the past that zoning codes, Euclidean zoning codes, which is what are the most of, most of our zoning is, um, is sort of the intention is to, uh, not allow expanding, expansion of non-conformities, uh, so that eventually non-conformities go away. Uh, that's not how this town has operated for the past several decades, and it's not how really any Euclidean zoning works anymore. That was the intention in the nineteen fifties, if you're gonna have a residential neighborhood and there's, uh, you know, a gas station in the middle of it, eventually that gas station will get torn down because it can't expand and keep up with the times. That's not what we do anymore, and certainly isn't necessarily applicable here, but, you know, you have a, a non-conformity, a pre-existing non-conformity that they want to expand. Is there a, an, an alternative way that they could expand within the, uh, new form-based code?
I'm, I'm gonna counter everything I just said and say I think asking these guys to change that, something that dramatically, when they are sitting there running their business and it is, we're too unfair.
Yeah, and there's another part to it, theoretically, with form-based code, it all works beautifully if everything is pull those down and just start from scratch. But what about what's left over, and now they have to, why can't they live by the old rules if they're a, a building that was built? And so it, it gets, it gets tricky, uh, then on a theoretical, if everything is new build and from scratch, I think we're, we, we've got it made in the shade, but this is gonna come out more.
Well, and I, I respect your comment earlier about this sets a precedent because everything that exists today does not conform.
Well, and to that, I will say, as being on the board for as long as we have been, um, you know, Chip, you, you, there was a timeframe in there that we were literally almost denying everything that was an expansion of a non-conformity, pre-existing non-conformity, we were pretty strict about it, and we denied several variance requests for that fact mostly, you know, because we didn't want to continue with the expansion of pre-existing non-conformities, so I don't, does that open up Pandora's box?
No, this just to me is so different because you have a building and a business that pre-existed the current zoning.
Right.
And so, you know, I mean, it became, um, non-conforming only because they changed the rule.
Our fault, yeah, the, the town's fault, it's not their fault.
It's definitely not self-created, right, because the zoning change was a, that's a good point.
That's a, that's one of the few that, that's actually valid, you're right.
Well, and, and the, and the also, the, the things that we were pretty strict about were, were residential, not necessarily commercial, so, so you know, I mean, this is obviously unique compared to what we were comparing.
We need to have a communication with planning to make sure that we're, uh, um, looking at this, uh, correctly that we may, you know, that we're not missing something, because kind of cleaning up of the leftovers from the old days, uh, I think there, there's gonna be a lot of this, I, on a guess, and, uh, I think we need a, we need a, a direction.
Well, certainly when they come back to ask for approval of the building on the corner, no problem there with me, but making sure that it confirms, conforms to their newer.
I agree with, with Shannon, and I also, you know, I like when Chris asked what part of this is part of the, the, the new code?
It locked and loaded for that answer.
And I, uh, you know, I'm just saying, I, I don't disagree with Bob either, maybe we need some kind of a, a go-ahead from the town board, they're the ones that came up with this wonderful code.
Well, it started with a, it started with a vision, it was grand, and then you had a backfill with, okay, now we need a new code. And, but then you get kind of, the details can get messy.
This is exactly, yeah.
The existing building isn't that much bigger than that barn we just, you know, we talked about, and that's the reality, I mean, this is a, I don't know the total size of the parcel here, but it's you know.
Yeah, well, a lot of the form-based code, a lot of the foreign, form-based code concepts, when I was in the C I C committee, was, it was basically a discussion amongst one person from every committee, so I mean, a lot of those ideas and, and that it came to fruition were, were generated just out of, you know, like, people and on other committees, so it wasn't necessarily, I mean, it was kind of like a work in progress, so to speak, so.
And, and I don't know how much I want to oh, God, how do I say this, wait, hang on, let me, let me rephrase this for. A lot of our form-based code rules all have to do with making things pedestrian, accessible, safe, and everything else. We are talking about a street that doesn't have a sidewalk. How much of a factor do some of these things like transparency and that type of thing have to be a factor if you can't actually walk in front of the building in the first place?
That's a good one, but I, and I've got one too, but if you wanna respond to what Shannon said, okay, then I'll say.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were pointing.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, I, I think that's a really good point, um. Yes, yep, that's all I.
But I, so the, the next one is, when we've been doing variances, we don't do package deals.
Right.
And, but, in a sense, you know, phase one is old-time stuff in a new zoning era, and we have to deal with it, phase, uh, two and three may never happen, I mean, who knows, but, but, but the thing of it is, there's nothing in all that we do with all this stuff that has to do with believing in the future with phases, we have to deal with the here and now, and, and that the, uh, now maybe planning can, can be more involved with phase, phases and all the, the, you know, it's a grander vision, but with us, with the variances, if we're gonna be held to all this stuff, there's nothing about phases and good faith and, and and something's gonna happen a year later or something like that, I don't think we can do business like that.
Yeah, you're not guaranteed to get buildings one and three. Um, that being said, if they ever build buildings one and three, it's gonna have to look so, pretty much like that, because there's not enough space there, and they're subject to the form-based code, unless they come back for a variance, which is something else that would be uh, cognizant of is that, you know, some, this might be sold to some other, someone who says,
Sure.
oh yeah, I don't want to do form-based code on these parcels, you come out and did it for the, for this one. It's something to keep in mind.
This, this is the tough one for me, I'm not exaggerating, this looks exactly like Jeff's building there with Uptown Tire. If you jump over the road, this one's here, that's exactly what he's, the same, even the anything is.
Wait, first of all, this I mean, you could. This does have seventy percent transparency, if those are glass.
Those aren't, well, and that's what I was gonna, I don't believe they're supposed to be glass.
Glass, but this is what I think.
Oh, the one on the bottom?
Yeah, that was the.
But.
But for what?
You also don't necessarily want to look at it on the greasy.
Right. I'm not kidding, if you look at it, it's exactly the same building, that's exactly what Jeff has, a lineup of doors all the way down, and you have the offices in the front, and and that's, and literally it's across the road.
Yeah, I, I, I think enforcing anything that is the new code on these guys is really, really not fair to them. But I'm also struggling with the where the direction is that we're supposed to be going to this new, so.
Yeah, that's why I said we need a direction, and also, you know, is there any, are we gonna grandfather?
Yeah.
And so we're back to our old code for certain things that, I don't know.
Well, you can't change the code, huh?
Well, but we've got two codes.
No, but, I mean, no, we don't.
No, we got, what, so what I'm hearing is that you want a little guidance, and I
Yeah.
I have an opinion, um, and I can give it to you, but I'm not a professional planner, and I didn't, and I'm not the planner of the, uh, Uptown uh, district and the creator of this form-based code, I would suggest that we continue until next meeting, and in the meantime, get input from your town planner, who did have a lot to do, was knowledgeable in general, but also about this particular zoning district and this particular code. Mike, does that make sense to you?
Yep.
Um, I hate to put stuff off, except that this is the form-based code and I can tell you're setting a tone right now.
Yeah, this is a big deal.
You're taking it seriously, is that, I mean, not that you want a continuance, but I think that's the appropriate thing to do here. I just don't see you guys being comfortable with the decision, frankly, frankly, I'm not comfortable with a decision until you get input from, I'm an amateur planner, and I have an opinion, but I don't know that that's what the town's position is. Um, and I, I think you should get, you have a planner, a town planner, who knows the answer to this, or at least can give you some better guidance.
This would be real easy if we were talking about, uh, you know, a store or apartment or something like that, that's always cake, but this is automotive, and that whole area is nothing but automotive down there anyway, and.
It, it is the business that it's always been, it's not like this is a new automotive.
Why don't I talk to Sarah? Um, and sort of give her some of your concerns and my thoughts, and, and I think what you need her to do is sort of give you some guidance based on the neighborhood, you know, the immediate, the adjacent parcels, the sidewalk issues. Last night at the town board meeting, there was a sidewalk envision plan presented, quite frankly, I don't remember if Kepner Road has one planned for it or not, or even if it does, when that would happen, but that might play into it.
I wanted to go to that and forgot.
Um, you can always dial in, which is nice.
No, I forgot, I mean. Yeah.
No, no, that's a problem, I don't.
I don't either.
Why don't I give Sarah sort of, and either she comes next meeting or puts something in writing, or conveys it to me or to Mike to convey to you?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I really thought the presentation was fine, I'm just confused about our mandate.
Me too.
Yeah, and, I mean, I think it's also very important for you guys to keep applications moving and vote on them that night, and accept this is your first real sort of, maybe potatoes form-based code one, and I agree, you, you're running the risk of a little precedent, if this is just how you get away around the requirements to form-based code, oh, you gotta pay, uh, you know, the extra hundred dollar application fee and spend the night with his own important, okay, right? Don't think you want that.
Right.
I'm, I'm willing, if it's helpful, I'll meet with whomever and ask the questions too. Happy to do so.
It's, uh.
Cause I, I think I'm really stirred up some of the controversy.
No, I think you were right.
No, I, I don't know, you all have this, and I, quite frankly, I have been texting, uh, people, other town staffs, is this, you know, what did you guys think of this? Um, I did haven't heard back, but from the minute they started talking, it dawned on me, oh, jeez, this is an issue for, you know, this is your first impression of this, this kind of application.
Yeah, and I'd come to the meeting if it was a convenient time to, if, if there is a, uh.
I mean, as far as having an opinion, I if the guy already exists, it's already automotive, and if there's not a sidewalk there, I'd go with the variances and let it be fine, but I, I feel like if we do that with everything, then we're not going to inform. If we do that with everything, then we're not going to inform Uptown to what the vision of Uptown is.
Yeah, and it's not about the presentation, it's about our process.
Right.
That we need to have a better uh, understanding of.
This isn't a deck they're adding on, this is all substantial addition on, in a totally different venue, right?
You know, and the phasing issue is, is, is well taken. Um, you know, if they're doing it all at once, I think that would be a different issue than.
It would.
Um, and they, you know, to his credit, he had to answer my question fairly, fairly and honestly. I don't know as soon as I can, but I, I, I don't know. Um, so, I, I don't get to these answers from your town planner.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested with that, you know, this is on a side street. Facing aside, most of it, I mean, I can certainly see keeping every.
Right.
On three thirty-two as much form based as possible, but I'm not sure is everything on side streets has to be one bit.
Well, I mean, yes, that's the code, but, you know, do you relax standards a little bit in terms of variances? Or not, I, and I recently had a conversation with the town manager about, uh, about a completely unrelated issue. Uh, he said they were very intentional with uh, what they did and did not include. And for design reasons, overall design of the district. Um, which is sort of what triggered me to say, oh geez, we, we might wanna slow down. This, the consultants and the town committees that did this and the town board were intentional in their. Creation of this as a design district.
Well, and then some of the um, early uh, renderings of the vision of what Uptown would look like, they had car dealerships in there. And, and they had it as the glass front car dealer and, and not the parking lot in front. So it, it was, it wasn't like that was not thought about being.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to continue till the December zoning.
I'll make the motion.
All right.
All right.
Sorry.
All right, now that's it, right?
I think you were all equally at fault for that, um, and I think that you all had the exact same concern, so I think this is good.
Hey, board members, press for rehearing? No? Any referrals from the town board?
Town board, yeah.
Yeah.
Buy a chance to look at that, or?
Yes.
We'll get you a good solid answer.
Hey, but you have some comments on the German Brothers?
I like the idea, I, I see, I saw the um, watched a couple of the public hearings that were done. And I've read through some of the comments that are very opposed to the changes. And especially the residences being added and everything else, but I think it looks like it's an improvement over what's there.
What is the deal with the finances? I mean, do they have to devolve to the town, which I can't believe they would ever have to do. You got it with him on that, and, and I mean, is that the way it is?
They have divulged that, but so, the town's been working with, and I'm about to um, get more involved just to sort of. Facilitate the process between the town board and the applicant. Of course they do, they're looking for incentives, they, they need to incentivize the town, and. For the most part, those incentives are, however crass it may be, monetary. Um, frequently, um, municipalities say, great, you want more units? That'll be four thousand dollars per unit, cash, cash or check, or a little bit less frasses. Uh, you know. We'd love to have your development here, but we need sewers over here. Why don't you put them in, or your development might cause uh, an increase in traffic, or a new school, or. An increase in traffic that you're going to contribute to in this already busy road, why don't you pay for a traffic light?
Well, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, I mean, it's like the Monarch, they put that Monarch thing up, right up the road from me, you know? That went from twenty-six single family homes to a hundred and fifty-one townhouses, okay? Incentive zoning, they built a bridge across Beaver Creek and, oh, that's it. But anyway, that's because Fivinsky wanted it, if the town wants it bad enough, they'll make it happen. But what I was picking up from the meeting that you, you know, there, you were saying that they had to divulge their, their P and L almost, you know?
And I, if I, if that's what it sounded, and I think that's what Peter Brew took it as, but then I talked to Ryan Lesbrook, and I've talked to Peter Brew. And said, that's not what I'm, I don't want you to be, I don't, I don't care, but you have to give, you have to put dollars and cents. To the amenities and to the incentives. How much are you giving the town, and how much is the town giving you? That's what state law and town code require. And what they did was put, uh, and I talked, I said to Greg, I said, you know, we're not looking for. You know, the, I don't, I don't know what, uh, you know, this infrastructure is gonna cost when you build it four years from now, I have no way of knowing. All they've got is that, they, they can't spec that out, so the prices they put on stuff, are they exact, are they precise? Can I guarantee, no, they're reasonable estimates, um, and, you know. Are there people in the town, including myself, who can look at those numbers and say, yeah, that's reasonable, is it exact? No. Um, would I probably say it's worth more or less? Yeah, probably not the numbers I would have come up with, but. They're in the ballpark, and how else, you know? We could hire a, you know, a certified uh, construction estimator to predict, and it, it would be also inaccurate. Um, so yeah, they need dollars and cents, but they don't, they're not, we're not asking to look up their skirt, we're asking them to put reasonable values on this stuff so the town can evaluate it. Okay, thank you, I was confused.
So what exactly are we being asked for here? I, the way I read it is just, do we have an opinion?
Sort of general, yeah, yes.
Which is a weird ask.
Well, so town code requires that, um, it be referred to the planning board for an official report, and I think town staff. Thought, let's send it to the zoning board as well, to see if they have any, I guess that's an affirmative input. If one of you thinks this is the worst ideas in sliced bread, I think they'd like to hear that, if, you know. You know, if one of you had a expertise and, you know, one of these, oh, you know, this is what I think about this. And you can also do that via public commentary, and I would also suggest, um, you know. Directly reaching out to your town board or to me to convey that to them would be an appropriate way to do it. Um, I, I, another reason I think it's on the agenda is, they just provided updated information. On the town's website, on the project tab, there's a German Brothers Marina, and you can see. The planning boards report, the environmental conservation boards report, their newest uh, plan, their newest project narrative. Which puts out, puts dollars and cents to it, um, and so, you know, rather than going on what they, it's still this plan, which is stayed the same.
Well, the one question that I, Chris is, I think it's backwards, because to me, all the premises that. We're not gonna be bringing boats down, you know, Westlake Road, is we're gonna get rid of all this, because we're gonna do all this work up in, on north. Well, have you been by north recently? I mean, isn't that a beautiful sight? I assume they're gonna be building some massive, you know. Blue Marina style building there to work on boats, but right now, I, I can't, maybe. Jim could get in there with his car to pull those trailers out, but I, well, nobody else could.
Yeah, I, you know, and I don't know, I think that's something we need some more detail on.
Um, but all of this is based on the fact that that's all gonna happen, that that's where all the work's gonna be done on the boats, I mean, the marinas, you know. And that's, to me, it seems like that has to happen, if the premise of this whole other thing's gonna come together, but.
Well, and that's, that's.
That's just my opinion.
One of the thing that, things that the town board has asked for in addition to sort of a summary of, you know, the, the applicant has provided what their suggested. Proposed amenities are. The town board is now going to respond and say, we like these other things, or perfect, we're good, or, and I'm gonna sort of coordinate that, but. I think one of the things that will come out of this process is that we need a little bit more detail on when you're gonna do this and how you're gonna do this. You know, the applicant hasn't had to do that yet. Uh, we weren't there, and they didn't have the answer, and they didn't have a detailed plan, and. Now it's, you know, it's getting closer to the time when that more detailed, you know, operations plan and phasing plan. Might need to be, you know, shaped a little bit more.
First to North Road stuff that's in the city?
No, that's in Canada, that's in the town.
Okay.
Um, I, for some reason.
Those supposed to go up by my house.
And I will caveat this, but not certain that I'm correct here, but I think Peter Brew said. In response to what, where are you gonna keep the, what, what's your offsite plan? That they weren't sure yet, which I think might mean that their North Road stuff is their North Road stuff, and they're looking for something else, or. Just haven't figured out how the North Road stuff plays in. What we've got on the table is, um, you know, taking the boats out, and then there, you know, there's a town board process. Then it goes to the planning board for site plan, and it goes back to the town board, and back to the planning board, and back to the town. So there's a lot of more development, right now what they're proposing is that. Uh, you know, that's not cheap to come from an, an argument, but some of the level of detail is more. You know, six months from now, when we're, we're in front of a planning board, that it's a hundred thousand dollar payment to an engineering company. To get you those plans.
Now, how much, I mean, this is that part of it, how much of the larger development out to the west is included in this?
That, this is all of it, I believe, R S M, I mean.
Yeah.
Is a separate, um, development, separate, separate owners.
Okay, that's right.
Um, and my, they have, so actually, it's not even one piece of property, they have, they filed their subdivision approval, so. Again, don't quote me, I believe there are fifty-two residential lots for the west of this property.
Not here for the other.
Um, now, one of the things that they're proposing, yeah, right there, uh, as well as HOA lands.
Focus that.
Yeah, that's. So if you look at the upside down view of the driveway. Uh, on the west side of Westlake Road, right above that, they're proposing an easement. For a, a town trail that would go from Westlake Road to a, a crosswalk on Westlake Road. That would access the lakeside amenities, and then the trail would go up. Just to the north of that U, and connect to a potential future homeowners association lands trail. Uh, that would be on that sort of wedge shaped parcel, and the, in theory, it could go all the way up to. Said Lakewood Meadows.
Yeah, so is that wedge shaped than the HOA?
Yes, that's, that would be owned, it's currently owned by R S M Development, or R S M Westlake Road LLC.
That's it.
And eventually would be turned over to presumably R S M Homeowners, Homeowners Association.
So that's why there aren't any residences along with the Marina one, on that side of the road?
Correct.
Okay, all right, got you.
So I, I mean, I guess the, the plan is to clean up that section of Westlake Road. To provide certain amenities to the town, like public restroom, public transient bounce, um, you know, the trail. Uh, a boat slip for Cheshire Fire Department, I think one of the fire departments, um, that kind of thing. And I, you know, the town board's interested in what people think of a plan. Um, by and large, you know, a lot of people say this'll ruin the lake, a lot of people say this is the best thing that's ever happened.
Now, down the road, or the, uh, with the builders being expecting some kind of a tax break?
Could be, I'm, not something that's been discussed yet, probably not actually, well, it wouldn't really be a town tax break. First of all, town taxes are fortunately incredibly low, so, um. Yeah.
Because I'm saying.
But that would be through the County of Ontario Industrial Development Agency. And the town, and the school district, and the county would have to agree before any tax incentives were provided, it's not. Something that would, you know, happen without the town's very thorough and careful sign up.
But that, but that.
The town has never, has, hasn't agreed to a, a pilot agreement in twenty years.
Okay, but that's been a problem with the city though, right? You know, with some of the Lake Shore development, at least, you know, figuring why the hotel never opened until, you know, we got to the old and gray. We were just assuming that they were trying to squeeze for more, now, I don't know, I don't have first hand information, no?
Um, and my guess is because the main reason people want. Uh, tax incentives from an industrial development agency through a pilot agreement is. Uh, because school taxes and not just Canadago schools, all school taxes are astronomical. I don't believe the school district uh, is willing to consider uh, entering into tax incentives through a pilot agreement. I, that's just my belief, I don't know that that's true, but I'm pretty sure that they've made it clear, just like the town has made it clear, it's not something we're really interested in doing.
Because we've had that issue with retail, something new goes in, like a, a big box Walmart or something. They would suggest we want the tax breaks, and then lo and behold, uh, the main street stores, you know, disappear. That's happened across America in various places, uh, Canadago is the rarity to have a uh, main street that's a pretty good, but that's.
Yeah, well, interestingly enough, I don't think we have any pilot agreements, or very many pilot agreements, there may be some. On some more significant industrial projects, but I don't actually even know.
That's true.
Probably the, the recycle place up at Kodak Park, it's, yeah. Generally, in general though, by the way, pilot agreements, payments in lieu of taxes, very rarely are there tax incentives. Uh, or tax breaks, that say you just don't have to pay taxes. What is supposed to be an actual incentive, hey, build your project here, or build your project at all, if you're sort of expanding your. Factory, because that will increase uh, our, our economy and create new jobs in a. Area of the country that doesn't get a lot of job growth, um, and as a reward, as an incentive to do that, instead of paying. Really high New York State property taxes will let you ease into it, the first year you pay ten percent of what you would, twenty, thirty. Until you're up over a ten year period to a hundred percent. So the alternative is the town gets none of that tax revenue, because the taxpayer doesn't build it. That's the theory, sometimes it works that way, sometimes it doesn't. Um, pilot agreements are very interesting, very rarely is it a terrible thing for the municipality. In, in many circumstances, so to say, speaking broadly.
Commercial, and this is on residential.
Yeah, well, I mean, commercial, industrial, it can be residential, depending on what the municipalities and the IDAs are looking for. But it's not like, hey, here's just a, a free present, and you don't have to pay taxes while this guy does, it's supposed to be an incentive.
Well, and the other thing is, Micron in Syracuse, or north of Syracuse, is, has the focus of everybody. All of the ancillary stuff that has to be built in support of that, who pays for it, and how's that gonna be done? Roads, uh, uh, or every, and it's huge.
With the pilot agreement.
Yeah.
It says we'll pay our ten, twenty, thirty percent tax each year, uh, real property tax of the school district, the city, the county, the town. Um, and then again, it's payments in lieu of taxes, so you might not be exempted from fire district.
Oh, I see.
Or your water district assessment.
Okay.
Or your sewer rent.
Yeah.
Um, and that's what, I mean, it's usually a ten, twenty page document that spells those things out.
Okay.
Um, or I've seen them say, and you'll contribute one million dollars to our highway fund on year three. Or, you know, whatever, they can be, they're flexible, and towns very rarely. The town, municipalities would do them if they were just hemorrhaging money because of it, it's a, a way to get more tax revenue. Through, by stepping it up.
Sure.
Um, the, the car costs are usually direct payments as opposed to, um. Um, the, the hard costs are usually direct payments as opposed to, um, stepped up.
Yeah.
Just, just background, I do a lot of.
Yeah, it's good information. So, so do we wanna make any statement or just say that we discussed it? I guess I encourage people, they have some strong feelings, to go talk to one of the town board members. The number of docs, is that within the Doc and Morey law?
That is a determination that will be made by probably Mike or Mike Murphy. Uh, according to the uniform Doc and Morey law. Um, the tier designation that is assigned by the town board. By designating the use of the property as commercial or residential or, uh, transient. Uh, what the applicant is looking for is tier two, believes they're entitled to it, I don't think the town has looked at it, I know I haven't. Um, but I believe, but I, actually, the applicant has told me that if it is a tier two, they believe they can get the number of dots that they want. Uh.
They, what was their, the request was for like thirty-six, the last, remember, uh, they wanted like three separate. Three separate docs, are we talking, we're talking about the same property, right, or by German Brothers that, that came in front of us?
It is German Brothers.
Yeah, so they wanted, you know, that parcel right there where the old house was, that's the same property.
Yup, yup.
It's like a hundred and fifty-one, isn't it?
I think they're looking for a hundred and fifty dots.
Yeah.
Which is X, and he said it last night, forty more than what they have right now. Um, and it, I forget also, that number includes the boats on the hill. Um.
I guess this would include all the ones they've had anchored out.
Yes, the, well, so the Moreys would be eliminated and twelve would be replaced. Um, so I, I think what, and we're gonna, I'm, one of the things I'm gonna ask is for a little bit of, uh, you know. Create a spreadsheet that says what you've got now, where it is, and what you're replacing with, but it, it's not. And again, there's not a hundred percent clarity on that, they're floating a concept now, and we're starting to. You know, focus in on, on that exact question. I mean, I think it's a good question and don't worry about it, I'm gonna ask that question. So that you and the town board and all the town residents know what the answer is, cause I'm a little unclear on it.
Uh, let's see, no referrals from the ordinance committee to the town manager. Um, the decision chief procedures, I think we talked about before, really. Um, you know, before we would talk about a few things, reasons for our decisions. I would sometimes add something which I thought had been in the discussion before we went through that thing.
Yeah, but that's, it's kind of hard to do sometimes, sometimes it's, this is, that is, it's like a.
Yeah, yeah, no, so I think doing it this way might.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, let's see, minutes of October seventeen. You have any comments, correction?
You, there was something about what was added that you thought we would need to talk about tonight, but I thought it was fine.
Um.
Because that went out as a draft and then all of the stuff you wrote up.
Oh, oh, that's, the finding, effecting findings on.
Yes, number one, let's never label them findings of fact from the attorney. Uh, it's okay for an attorney to prepare to draft those. Um, but those are findings of fact I prepared for the board.
Right.
Um.
I guess, should we vote on those? They were pretty extensive.
You don't have to, I think as chair, you can sort of just adopt them since the board directed me to prepare them, but.
Okay.
Um. The theory, so what you want is findings to differentiate. In the, in a potential, uh, precedential situation. Somebody comes and says, you did this, something exact same, right, you granted this, so, you know, just grant this one. Well, these findings say that these are the differences, you know, so. And then there's the other thing, you need, you need those for potential litigation, that's what I was doing with the ones that we have. Um, and so long as the chair has adopted them, believes that, you know, part of, they should go right attached to the decision chief. Um.
Which they will.
And, you know, not. Uh, attached until Chip looks at him and says, yup, I'm signing. Um, that you believe they accurately reflect the will of the board, I guess you'd say. Um, and I think they, I, that's, I'm not gonna draft ones that don't, so, you know, you can, you can rest assured there. Um, and then, so in lawsuits, you're allowed to adopt fa- findings essentially when you get sued. You know, your lawyer says, uh, you guys didn't adopt any findings, did you want to adopt these findings? And the board says, yup, all in favor, aye, and so if it came down to it, we could, you know, have a vote, but I don't think it's necessary. Um, and I don't like doing stuff on an application when it's not on the agenda. I'm comfortable that we acted procedurally in a correct manner.
Uh, motion to accept the nuts?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
German?
Are we gonna do another, an extra meeting in December?
Yeah, it just came out today, Sarah said the fifth of December. No, no, Sarah, there was, something that came around that Kelly had forwarded, asking about tonight that.
Well, yeah, that was, that was originally that. Continuation.
Yeah.
Sarah's saying.
Okay, we, as far as you know.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, that's okay.
No, that's okay.
We go, yeah, we haven't decided on exactly, but that was.
Okay.
Which day?
I need one though.
I don't know that I saw that.
I don't know if we are gonna need one, uh, if it's not that heavy coming into this deadline, so we'll see, and I'll discuss it, so. But we'll definitely send out anything more advanced.
I think we've got a couple of continuations, but I'm not sure there'll be a lot of discussion about those.
I agree.
So.
Well, and how did the, yeah, I, the December fifth, I, what I said to you this morning is, I had originally said the fifth is fine, it's not gonna be okay for me, I don't. Sorry.
I mean, if we can, I guess I'd rather maybe just have one meeting that lasts until, thirty?
I, I.
Pretty different.
Thirty-nine. We'll see. And I, I need to say, I was complaining before about presentations and people, you know, not knowing which end was up. Today, I thought things were smooth tonight, and I think, you know, as you grow in the job and get used to it. Uh, getting these people in sync with where we're coming from, and, so tonight, I, I really, uh, thought it was good, you know, reflection on what you're doing.
Thank you.
Agree that, yeah.
Wow, two kudos to them tonight, right?
Wait, I got, I got another, you know, one of the things I do during these meetings is frantically look through the applications and. Especially the zoning law determinations, and man, Mike, they're good. I mean, these are exactly what I think a zoning law determination should be, just, just the facts, and then it lists what the determination is, and I, I. Uh, well, we're all piling on with, uh, good thoughts, and these are great, it's what you need, it's what, it's what the whole process needs, so.
There you go.
I know, right?
You're gonna hear a German quickly.
Good job, I know, right? By relieving a good note.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes.
Happy Thanksgiving, you guys, meeting adjourned, right?
Yeah, you moved it.
Yeah.
Ah, that's right.
So.
You guys.
Have a good Thanksgiving, Kelly.